Well, it's good to see you guys.
Yeah, it's been a long time.
Yeah, it's been a minute. We're going to go ahead and get started. So, I will call it to roll. The August 6, 2025 regular meeting of the Planning Commission will come to order at 6:35 PM. Please rise and would Commissioner Uva lead us in the flag?
Stand.
No, I'm sorry, Mr. Saich. What are you doing?
Yes. It'll be hard. Begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with every just as well.
If we can remain standing just for a quick second. Good and gracious God, as always, we want to thank you for the many blessings you give us each and every day of our lives. We want to thank you for the gift of our faith, of our family, and of our friends. And tonight, as we come before you as a planning commission, we ask you for wisdom and judgment to what's right for the items before us and for our residents and for our community and our city. Please protect those who protect us, our police and fire departments. And thank you for all the blessings you give us. Thank you for the ability to share what we have with others, to minister to those you place before us, but especially to pray for those beyond our reach. In your holy name we pray. Amen. Amen. Okay. And may I have our Planning Commission Secretary Rhea please call the roll.
Yes. Commissioner Luhan.
Present.
Commissioner Sakali.
Present.
Commissioner Legospi.
Present.
Vice Chair Uva.
Present.
And Chair Gera.
I am here. Thank you. So, this is the time set aside for oral communication from the Planning Commission. Does any commissioners wish to make any announcements, report on a conference meeting, or request items for a future agenda? Anybody? No?
None.
Okay. Great. So, I just, yeah, I'll make one announcement on there. Just like I used to do it with Mayor Alex Sahab. A couple of days before in a council meeting, we would run into each other at one of the items' locations that you would have on the agenda. So, today, this afternoon, while doing our homework, Vice Chair Uva and myself ran into each other, almost literally, at one of the locations on their agenda. So, we were both doing our homework at the same time, and we both having startled each other in front of one of the items' addresses itself. Anyway, so I do know that Vice Chair Uva, who was out there today. Anyways, I will now ask for presentations. As a Community Development Director, have a report on the city council action or any other general updates.
Thank you, Chair Gera. Just a quick update. The last few months, I know we had a couple of canceled Planning Commission meetings. But as I had shared at the last Planning Commission meeting, staff took the opportunity to really take a deeper dive into some of our general plan update activities. We've been working with our consultant to develop the different zoning maps and reviews of different parcels related to the general plans update. A lot of dive into internal meetings related to the general plan elements. And so, I just wanted to share that we're continuing to make progress. We've also updated our general plan website. I'll be sending the link to that to all the planning commissioners. And also, we'll be updating our development activity report for this upcoming new monthly report. So, I just wanted to let you know, even though the Planning Commission meetings were canceled, planning staff really took the opportunity to divert some of our attention into some of the very important general plan updates. That's my update for tonight. Thank you, Chair.
Great. Thank you. So, now is the time set aside for public hearing, PLN 2500047, the Plan Sign Program. Does the Planning Commission Secretary have proof of publication?
I do.
Okay, great. Well, the Community Development Director, introduce staff making the presentation, please.
Yes, we have our senior planner Rebecca, who will be presenting tonight's item. And we have a PowerPoint presentation that we will bring up on the screen. Good evening, Chair Gera and Vice Chair Uva, Commissioners and members of the audience. This evening, I will be presenting PLN-25-0047, a request for a plan sign program for a newly constructed multi-tenant commercial center located at 9432 Telegraph Road. Just to inform you, the applicant is here in the audience. His name is Al Pham, as well as the sign program designer, K. Qua. The request is for a plan sign program, or PSP, to establish the size, location, number, and appearance of signs within the multi-tenant medical office building. Per the Downey Municipal Code, a PSP is required for properties with three or more non-residential tenants, which applies here, as the building will accommodate three tenant spaces. The, as you can see in the aerial, the project site is located on the south side of Telegraph Road, between Passions Boulevard and Hasty Avenue, actually, to the east, with the city of Pico Rivera to the north. The Planning Commission previously approved the site plan review for the medical building in May of 2022, under Resolution 22-3196. The condition of that approval also required a plan sign program prior to the installation of any exterior signage, therefore, leading to this request as well. Here you will find existing site conditions. Here, you see the images of existing site conditions from west, north, and east elevations. The following slide illustrates the zoning and general plan designation. As highlighted in the yellow box, you can see that the zoning is C2 general commercial, and the general plan designation is neighborhood commercial. The plan sign program requirement and proposal. The DMC requires the establishment of the PSP for a site having three or more tenant spaces. The subject property, again, meets that criteria. As illustrated in the aerial to the right, there will be three wall signs, one per tenant space, and one monument sign along Telegraph Road. All signs will be internally illuminated, channel letters, and can also be, or reverse pen channel letters, mounted to the existing wood siding backgrounds on the facade, which are already incorporated into the facade or the building's architecture. You will see that in a minute. The PSP outlines criteria such as the type of wall signage that will be implemented, again, which would be individual channel letters with acrylic faces or reverse pen channel letters. The illumination will comply with the Downey Municipal Code, Section 9624 lighting standards, as conditioned per the reso. It will allow signage with one or two line sign copies, ensure visual consistency by identifying the placement of the signage in those areas where the wood siding would be located. Sorry. While the PSP does not prescribe specific font colors, it requires landlord approval before submission to the city, ensuring consistency. It also allows exceptions for corporate branding with landlord approval, of course, and while national trademarks and logos are exempt when needed. Specific locations, limitations, and maintenance requirements are provided within the specific plan. An example of that would be to maintain the site's overall appearance, and the PSP requires that, within 15 days of the tenant's lease expiration or termination, the landlord will ensure that the tenant's wall sign is removed and the sign is returned to its original condition. Moving to wall sign location and sizes. The elevation here shows the proposed wall signs. Locations above each tenant's main entrance. You can see tenant one, two, and three wall signs. Tenant one identifies a sign area of two feet by, I'm sorry, 32 inches by 22 feet. While tenant one, two, sign two and three, or tenant two and three, have the same sign area, which is two feet by 13 feet. Just to kind of go back, the total, the maximum sign area as proposed is, for tenant one, is .95 square feet per linear feet for tenant one, 1.01 square feet per linear feet per tenant two, and 1.24 square feet per linear feet for tenant three. All signs are compliant with the maximum sign area of 1.5 square feet of wall signage per linear feet of tenant footage per the Downey Municipal Code. Here's some information regarding monument sign and location and size. As shown here, the proposed monument sign will be located along Telegraph Road, near the driveway entrance, clear of the driveway, but near it. It will be double-sided, offering visibility for traffic and going in both directions. It will accommodate three interchangeable panels, and will have a push-through panel for the identification sign. Although the sign says MKA Professional Center, it will be updated to say MKA Medical Center, just as a brief note. The monument sign will be a total of five foot, four inches in height, and it have a length of seven feet, six inches. The proposed sign, the proposed monument will also have 39.9 square feet per side, for a total of 79.8 square footage, which exceeds the allowable, exceeds the allowable maximum sign area of 35.9 by 43.8 square feet. However, the sign, the sign program can deviate from the sign standards in the Downey Municipal Code, which we will clarify a little bit more here in this slide. This review is compliance with the Downey sign regulations. The table to your right summarizes how the sign is complying and where the deviation is proposed. Under the Downey Municipal Code, signage in the C2 regulations, zoning allows up to 1.5 square feet of wall signage per linear foot for tenant frontage, and 1/3 square foot for monument signs per linear foot of building frontage. And that is calculated and shown in column two of the table. As shown in the, under the last row for total, labeled total, the proposed sign area is 192.3 square feet, and where, which is within the allowable max, maximum allowed area of 197.8 square feet. However, as you, if I've mentioned before, there is a deviation, which is the request, which is for the monument sign, which would allow a total of 79.8 square feet, which, again, exceeds the area by 33.8 square feet.
Can you go back to the previous slide one more time, please, regarding the size? Yeah. I have a question. On the 39.5 square feet, is...
That's per side, sorry.
Per side?
Yeah.
That's the maximum?
The maximum per the Downey Municipal Code is 35.9.
35.9?
Hence, therefore...
39.5.
Yeah. I know, it's a little confusing.
Thank you.
However, the deviation is acceptable under the Downey Municipal Code, Section 9610.04, and the overall total sign area remains compliant as long as the overall sign area remains compliant and does not exceed, again, the maximum combined total of 197.8.
How did we, how do we come up with that on the, on our sign ordinance, the 35.9 square feet? Is it based on the number, the square footage of the entire property?
It's based on the frontage, the designated frontage of the building. In this case, it would be 108 feet times the 1/3 square per linear. Yeah.
Thank you.
Staff supports, just to continue analysis, and staff supports the proposed deviation based on the fact that the proposed SP plan sign program is in compliance with the Downey Municipal Code pursuant to Chapter 6 signs. Maintains an aesthetically cohesive and consistent sign plan with allowable sign area. And also demonstrates that the proposed signs are appropriate for the multi-tenant medical building and complement the facade and are located on the existing wood siding backgrounds. Additionally, the deviation will also improve wayfinding for the medical center by ensuring the monument sign is clearly visible from both westbound and eastbound traffic along Telegraph Road. And lastly, maintenance requirements are clearly outlined and conditioned within to ensure compliance and aesthetics. The project is categorically exempt under CEQA, under Section 15311 accessory structures. On July 24, 2025, the notice of the pending public hearing before the Planning Commission was published in the Downey Patriot and mailed to all tenants and property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. There has been no correspondence on the item. In conclusion, the proposed sign program complies with the municipal code and provides clear and consistent support to tenant visibility. Therefore, staff recommends the Planning Commission adopt Resolution 250453, approving PLN 250-00047, hereby establishing plan sign program for 9432 Telegraph Road. This concludes my presentation. I'm here to answer any questions you may have. Thank you.
Thank you. Does the Planning Commission have any questions of staff at this time?
I have questions. A while back, we approved a sign, I believe, on Old River School Road and Stewart and Gray for business.
Yes, I saw it the other day. Yes, whatever, yes.
That was before, so that, at that time, when we approved it, so this is going to be different now, that now is changing from the last time we approved that specific sign on that location?
At this same location?
No. You're talking the one we did a couple of months ago.
Yeah.
Stewart and Gray.
Yeah, in Old River School Road.
Yeah, that's already done, right?
No, no, yeah, yeah, I know. This resolution, is it going to change anything, or is it complimentary to that?
Commissioners, I could answer that question. So, that specific sign program is specific for that site. So, for Old River School Road and, I believe, Stewart and Gray, that intersection, that plaza, that has its own sign program. So, for this site, it has a separate sign program. It doesn't change anything that we've previously approved.
Okay. Thanks.
You know, my question, I had asked that a little while ago too, but I see it on the attachment. I guess you can, it depends on the design guidelines. You can add a logo as long as it fits into the name, as long as the landlord wants it, kind of thing?
Yeah.
Okay, because we've had them, the last one we approved... The last one we approved was just the white font letters, and, you know, you see some other ones on there. So, as long as, I guess it's within the guidelines or so forth, right?
The size designation.
The size on it, okay. And my other question is, why, if, if, if we have a sign ordinance and this fits within it, I guess, I mean, why, why do we have to bring it up to the Planning Commission every time out there, unless there's a deviation? Okay, why, and, and, I mean, I don't mind seeing you nice folks here and stuff like that, but why, this one seems pretty clear-cut.
For sign, plan sign programs, it gives opportunity for the property owner to do
a more customization and also cohesiveness to the building itself. So, even though a plan sag program is compliant with our Downey Municipal Code, it does get the option to customize it, so only allowing black font, for example, for that previous sign program, or allowing a certain font type. It will give opportunities to the applicant property owner to give that customization. And also, in addition, our Municipal Code does say, if a tenant building has more than three tenants, it requires a sign program.
No, I understand the sign program, but couldn't it be approved at the staff level, is what I'm saying? If it's, if it's complies with our code, and, and so, you know, they have to have one, great. So, why, you know, this meets code, this meets this, this meets that, I don't have a problem with it, I'm just saying, why?
Thank you for that, that question, Chair. So, yeah, the question is, why do they even need to come to the Planning Commission if it, what you're looking at is already presented as, the applicant has presented a cohesive design, that what I'm interpreting today looks and meets code. The planned sign program is a requirement in the code that when there's three or more tenants, that the Planning Commission needs to look at. Now, you may ask, well, why does the Planning Commission need to look at? In this case, in this application, the applicant is using the discretionary part that's written into the planned sign program of the code that allows the applicant flexibility, that staff wouldn't have the flexibility to approve. Although we're, we're presenting tonight, says, the conclusion is it meets code, the applicant is invoking, for lack of a better word, or is opting to utilize the flexibility that the Planning Commission to off, that offers, that the sign area be calculated as one, and that allows them to utilize that sign area and distribute it as they need. So, I believe there's one sign, I believe the monument sign exceeds the sign area just slightly, but altogether, it meets it. Now, you may ask, well, can't, why can't staff exercise that discretion? The, the code has been designed to allow only staff to look at things a little bit more black and white, and when we're exercising discretion, then it comes to the Planning Commission. Now, another topic that may come out of what I'm sharing with you is, you know, could the code be amended to allow staff to have that discretion? Possibly. Could the code be amended in the future, maybe not here, and applicable in this case, because it's already before you, but could the code be amended to allow staff discretion, but only give staff a certain amount of discretion, maybe only allowing, in some codes in other cities that I've worked in, you know, we're only allowed to have discretion up to a certain percentage, or there's a limit? Because again, there's, there's, the code is designed to give, give a balance that staff has enough discretion, that we're not overly being discretionary, interpreting things where there's a lot of flexibility, that really comes, would come to a body like the Planning Commission. So, hopefully that answers your question.
Yes.
But I think it brings up a good topic. Is there an opportunity to streamline certain applications and leave it at the discretion of the Planning Commission? That, that's always a topic that we're interested in hearing from the Planning Commission.
Okay. This would be a good example of it, because it's, it's not a, you know, 20 units, and it's not all this. And, and by the way, I went by the building today, the building is beautiful, so it's going to be a nice addition. And there, can you tell the neighbors to implement the same plan, please? No, I'm kidding.
Yes, thank you, Chair. I agree, this is a fantastic upgrade to that area of Downey, and this is a great example of revitalizing a commercial site, and I think the signs, I agree, staff's recommendation, we find that they're complimentary as part of upgrading the site, that, that's, that's was part of staff's recommendation.
My last question, if, if the applicant, if the landlord wanted to change, you know, they have it for four or five years, and then they have some different tenants, and they wanted to change their sign plan, can they just do that? In other words, they want to have different fonts or different things on there? They don't have to come back to us to change the sign plan, as long as they have a plan that fits code?
Yes, Chair. So, the code does allow this, the staff, the ability to review and approve minor modifications to the sign program. The individual signs are approved through a sign permit and a building permit, so the copy, it's called, the text of the sign can change. When, when a tenant changes, it doesn't require a change to the program, it just requires a new permit to be issued. So, that's a separate process, but also minor changes to the program can be made at an administrative level.
Okay, thank you.
If I may just make a quick comment, I don't have a question, but I, I also drove by, and I was very impressed and with the building, and I just want to thank the applicant for their willingness to invest in our city, especially on Telegraph. Thank you.
You can tell them in a second when they have a chance to come up here too. So, okay, any other questions of staff? So, great, thank you so much, we appreciate it.
Thank you, it's a pleasure.
So, now, before I have opened up the public hearing and call the applicant or the representatives, this would be a good time for any of us to disclose any other visits. You went by there, I don't know if you drove after you saw me today over there too-
Yeah.
-like I did, or any other pre-hearing discussions that the commissioners may have had about the project. So, this would be the time.
So, I'll start, and I did drive by the property, tried to stop kind of in front of it, but really couldn't, so then I went across the street into the, the shopping center across the street and faced it and got a really good look at it. So, yes, I did drive by.
Okay. Anybody else out there? So, okay, great. So, the public hearing is now open. Will the applicant or the representative please come forward to give any testimony? If you'd so like, you don't have to, so.
Good evening.
Hi.
Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Chair, Vice Chair, Commissioners, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Al Faddeh, and here's Dr. Minutran, the very first tenant-
Oh, there you go.
-of the medical building. It's Mr. Key Quark, the author of the PSP. We here to request the approval of the committee for our PSP under plan sign program. The purpose here is to build a building, well, first off, for us to make a living, but then also to serve the community. And we appreciate your words of remark as you drive by, see what we've been doing on that. The medical center, we only have one purpose, that is to serve the community in the medical related field. There won't be any other type of business but the medical related field, because that's our field.
Good.
Yeah, so, with that, once again, thank you, Rebecca, for presenting the project, and staff, for your comment on that.
Okay. Can I ask you, what, what made you decide to, you know, you bought that building, and you've been refurbishing that location, and why, why Downey?
So, I started practice in 2005 in Long Beach, and there was a need for an endocrinologist in Downey, and it took me a while for, to make that move. I actually rented a place on Davis Street-
Okay.
-right here.
Right.
And after about three years, my practice grew, and I needed a bigger space, and I wanted to do more. And so, I was looking for, to move into a bigger place, but I couldn't find anything that would suit my practice. And so, one of my friends found the, the lot, and so, we bought it in 2018. And the project has been since 2018, and it's very painful.
Right.
Very, very painful. And I'm looking, so looking forward to the next few months to be able to move in. And Downey is a great city, and, and I've worked here almost 10 years, and I love the people, I love the population, I love what I do, and so, I hope to be able to serve more with my specialty for our patients. But also, I hope to be the first and not the only one that will beautify that whole Telegraph Street. So, that's my hope in the future for the next five years.
We'll continue to help you with that, is my time. Invite us to your ribbon cutting, but thank you for investing in our community.
Thank you.
Is there, is there any other questions of the applicant at this time?
I just have a comment. I think it's a beautiful building, like what was said, but what I really like is the wood siding for the signs. You don't really see that very much, and it just, it'll make it pop really nicely, so it'll be really pretty. Can't wait for you to open your doors.
Yes.
Best of luck.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you so much for working with us for many years.
That's really sad to say, I'm so sorry.
But we're almost there.
Great, thank you.
During the COVID time, everything-
Yeah, no, we understand, we understand. And make sure you, are you still in Davis before you move?
No, I'm actually right across the street in Telegraph in Pico.
Oh, okay, oh, I know where you are, okay.
Drive across the street.
Well, we're glad you're here from Long Beach, we're much better than Long Beach, so, yeah.
Thank you.
Anyways, thank you. Okay. So, at this time, are we going to close the Planning Commission, the public hearing? Will staff confirm if there's been any, any correspondence in favor or opposition to this?
No correspondence was received.
Okay, great. So, we already talked about in favor of it, there's nothing rebuttal at this time, hearing no objections, I'm going to go ahead and close the planning, the public hearing. So, now is the time for, the time for any planning committees to deliberate, anything that anybody would like to discuss. We've, we've always have a pretty lively Planning Commission, so we ask as we go. So, at this point, is there anybody else, any other question? So, what's the, if hearing none, what's the pleasure of the Planning Commission?
So, I will move that we approve PLN 25-0047, the planned sign program.
I'll second it.
Okay. We have a motion in a second, and any further discussion? Okay, all right, please vote.
Motion passes 5-0.
Great. So, congratulations and thank you. So, okay. So, now is the time set aside for public hearing, PLN 2500116. It's an appeal of the Director of Community Development Determination. Does the Planning Commission Secretary have proof of publication?
Yes, I do.
Okay. You're, by the way, I'm sorry, you're, you're welcome to stay, but you're, it's okay to leave. So, yes, you do, okay. Will the Community Development Director please introduce staff making the presentation?
Yes, thank you, Chair Guerra. Tonight's presentation for this item will be presented by our Assistant Planner, Marissa Montero, and we have a PowerPoint presentation that accompanies this item. This item does rely heavily on photographs and the illustrations provided by the applicant. And so, if, if you would like us to pause, we can do that, because there is quite a bit to take in, as you probably realize through reviewing the staff report and the various attachments. There's also design guidelines that are included as part of staff's interpretation of the design guidelines and the code. And also, the determination was also based on the zoning code of the city. So, those are companion documents that Marissa will review today. She'll give you a timeline of how we got here. We've met with the applicant, property owner, Ms. Brenda Velazquez, and Mr. Guzman, the designer, in, in our offices, because we do understand there is a lot of work and a lot of heart that went into preparing these plans. There's a lot of investment being proposed in Downey, and we value that. But as we did explain to them, that as staff, that is our job to look at the code, and as in the previous item, sometimes things are written a little bit in black and white. When there's flexibility and subjectivity that's introduced, that's an item that can come before the Planning Commission, and that's a benefit to the applicant, that we encourage them to go ahead and proceed if that's what they wanted to do. Their appeal letter is included in the packet, which Marissa will also be reviewing. I think there's a lot of value and a lot of points to be considered by the Planning Commission and to look at the record as a whole, and to deliberate on this item. So, with that, I'll introduce it over to our Assistant Planner, Marissa Montero. Thank you, Chair.
She's, she's ready for us, even drank water before, taking a pause.
A lot of pages to get through. All right. Good evening, Chair Guerra, Vice Chair Uva, Commissioners and members of the audience. The item before you is PLN-25-00116, an appeal of an administrative decision pursuant to DMC Section 9806. All right. Okay. The request is to consider an appeal of a determination made by the Director of Community Development, that the proposed roofline alterations do not comply with the DMC R1 Development Standards and the Single Family Residential Design Guidelines. I'll refer to the Single Family Residential Design Guidelines as just design guidelines throughout the presentation.
If I may just add a little information that I forgot to add earlier, is that following Ms. Montero's presentation, presenting the staff's determination, the staff report, the applicant also has provided slides to staff, which we've uploaded into our system, and that will be presented by the applicant. So, I just wanted to give you a little context on that as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marissa.
Of course. All right. The subject property is located on the northeast corner of Clancy Avenue and Appleby Street. The main crossroads for this area are Lakewood Boulevard and Gallatin Road. And on the slide, we can see the subject property outlined. The subject property is Zoned R1 Single Family Residential with a general plan land use designation of low-density residential. The surrounding uses are all single-family residential. And then, right in the corner, you can see some red for general commercial, again, at the intersection of Lakewood Boulevard and Gallatin Road. Oops. Okay. The property is developed with a 1,150 square-foot single-family residence, a 455-square-foot attached breezeway, and a 441-square-foot attached garage. These are photos of the existing home, an elevation, a view from Clancy Avenue, and then a view from Appleby Street, and then that's an aerial of the property. The proposed scope of work includes additions to the living area for a foyer, bathroom, and living room expansion, the conversion of an attached breezeway into livable floor area for a bedroom, bathroom, and laundry room, and a new front porch, and a facade remodel resulting in the alteration of the existing architectural style. I'm sorry, just wanted to point out the images we have on the slide here. We have the proposed site plan with the additions outlined in red, and then a rendering of the proposed facade remodel. The subject property is located in the R1 zone, and therefore, any additions, remodels, or alterations are subject to DMC Section 9312.08, which is the residential zones property development standards, and DMC Section 9312.08B3, which requires construction in the R1 zone to comply with the Single Family Residential Design Guidelines. The R1 Development Standards and Design Guidelines were developed to provide design guidance for proposed additions and alterations to single-family homes, while at the same time considering any existing structures on the site and the surrounding properties architectural forms to ensure consistency. These standards and the guidelines were adopted by the City Council in May of 2021, after extensive community engagement and Planning Commission review. And this is a timeline- And this is a timeline of that effort to adopt the development standards and the design guidelines. I'll pause for a moment. Okay. So the design guidelines have multiple sections in the bulleted list on the left-hand side of the screen, of the slide. So those sections include the residential design goals and principles, Downey's characteristic residential architectural styles, mandatory development standards, and recommended design guidelines. For projects that do not fully comply with the design guidelines or propose an architectural style different from the Downey characteristic residential architectural styles, included in Section 3 of the design guidelines, an alternative review process is outlined to evaluate compliance with the residential design goals and principles. This approach ensures that alternative architectural styles may be permitted as long as they align with the broader intent of the guidelines. Additionally, if when reviewing a project, staff determines that it does not comply with the design guidelines, the applicant can appeal the decision to determine compliance with the residential design goals and principles. So DMC Section 9814.04I1I and Page 2 of the design guidelines indicate that the planning commission has the authority to consider an appeal of a director's determination. So the chart on the top of the slide shows the review and appeal process for the DMC R1 development standards, and the chart on the bottom shows the review and appeal process for the design guidelines. So as you can see, we, you know, start from staff review, which can then be appealed to, depending which process we're looking at, the director, or the term in the code is city planner, but then director. Then we go, it can be further appealed to the planning commission, and then the planning commission can make a decision, which is why we're here today. All right, so this is a brief timeline. So on May 28th, the applicant visited the Planning Division counter for a courtesy review of the proposed project. Staff noticed the varying roof styles, which partially gave the appearance of a flat roof. It did not comply with the DMC. On June 17th, staff met with the project's designer and the property owner to discuss the project and explain that while gable, that while the gable roof would remain, using new parapits in front of the gables and flat-roofed additions created the visual impression of a flat-roofed home, which results in staff's determination that the project is subject to the flat roof provisions of the DMC, specifically 9312.08B20. The applicant asserted that the parapet does not constitute a flat roof because the gable roof remains structurally intact and disagreed with staff's assessment. Staff explained that the application of the DMC R1 development standards and design guidelines can be appealed to and considered by the planning commission. Furthermore, since staff's comments were based on the plan shown at the counter and via email, and no formal application submittal had been made, staff advised applicant to submit a building permit application with plans, which would undergo preliminary review from the Planning Division before fees are collected. On July, I'm sorry, on June 25th, the city received a building permit application to initiate the permitting process. On July 8th, the Director of Community Development issued a determination letter to the applicant affirming staff's decision regarding the proposed project and issues of compliance with the DMC and design guidelines. On July 15th, the property owner and design consultant submitted an appeal of the director's determination letter to the city clerk. All right, so on this slide, we're going to get into more details about the proposed roof form and pitch. So the facade remodel includes an alteration in the roof lines. This image shows a proposed roof plan with the varying roof styles color-coded. The home's existing roof design is characterized with intersecting gable roofs with a 312 roof pitch. As proposed, the project has three distinct roof styles. The green shows the existing gable roof for the breezeway, garage, and a portion of a bedroom, which would remain unchanged and visible from the public right-of-way. Blue shows the proposed additions for the foyer, bathroom, and living room expansion, which are designed to include a flat roof with a quarter-inch to 12-inch roof pitch with an additional 12-inch parapet. The yellow shows the remaining portions of the dwelling would remain with the existing gable roof. However, a new 47-inch parapet wall would be added to the elevations, which would screen and obscure the gable roof, resulting in the appearance of a flat roof. The following slides summarize staff's determination of the project's compliance with the DMC and design guidelines. The first standard and corresponding code section in staff's determination is to use 360-degree architecture and maintain design consistency throughout the project design. The project consists of inconsistent design styles that incorporate a combination of the existing gable roofs, new flat roofs for the proposed additions, and new parapet walls to conceal portions of the existing gable roof. As a result, the overall appearance is a mix of gable and flat roof styles, lacking consistency in architectural design. The following, sorry, lacking consistency in architectural design. So that was that first row in that table. The following standard and code section is to design additions with materials, roof forms, and architectural styles consistent with the principal structure. The overall appearance of the proposed design does not utilize the existing prominent roof form and pitch. Again, the proposed design lacks consistency as it mixes differing roof styles that do not create a cohesive architectural design. Although the proposed design incorporates three distinct roof styles, only two, the gable and flat roof design elements, will appear from the public right-of-way. The code requires that roof alterations either, one, match the existing home, or two, be consistent throughout the entire structure. The proposed design satisfies neither of the above referenced DMC sections. If the roof lines were visually unified to appear as a flat roof, the project would still not comply with the last code section included in staff's determination, which is DMC Section 9312.08B20, which limits flat roofs to blocks where at least 30% of homes on the block feature a flat roof design or if the home, or if the existing home already has a flat roof. Because the subject property is located on a corner lot, it is part of two blocks, both sides of Clancy Avenue between Appleby and Sheridanell Avenue, and Appleby Street between Clancy Avenue and Hildan Avenue. The homes on the two qualifying blocks all have pitched roofs and none have a flat roof. So this is an aerial image showing the, again, the two blocks, and that determination is made by definitions in our code, and that's also been included in the staff report. This slide shows the homes on those two blocks. And as you can see, they all have a pitched roof, and again, none of the homes here have a flat roof. So therefore, not meeting the 30% requirement. All right. The determination letter sent to the applicant affirmed staff's determination regarding non-compliance with the R1 development standards and the, and per the alternative review process, which we discussed at the beginning, outlined in the design guidelines, found that the project also does not comply with the residential design goals and principles. Specifically, residential design goals and principles number eight is not met because the project lacks internal consistency of style as it showcases different roof styles within the same design. And again, we just talked about it, but DMC Section 9312.08B20 flat roofs is also not met because the flat roof for the additions and the use of parapets to conceal the existing gable give the appearance of a flat roof and therefore must comply with the development standards applicable to designs that incorporate flat roofs. As proposed, the project does not comply with the development standards and the design guidelines. To comply with the design guidelines and the development standards, the project must revise the proposed roof alteration to be consistent with the home's existing architectural style or change the roof style of the entire structure as long as it results in one cohesive roof style. However, a flat roof is not permitted as the property does not meet the locational requirements for that roof type. Okay. So so far in this presentation, we have reviewed staff's determination and the director's determination. The planning commission should consider the appellant's justification and staff's response when determining whether to affirm the director's decision, modify the director's decision, or reverse the director's decision, which, as we can see through this flow chart. So the following slides summarize appellant's justifications as outlined in the appeal letter and staff's responses. So here, the first one, the appellant states that the design is categorized as 21st century modern, which is president, which is present in the city's design guidelines. Therefore, the determination that the proposed architectural style is not allowed is not correct. Staff's response is, staff's determination is not related to an architectural style, but rather regarding the use of multiple styles of roofs, including flat roofs. 21st century modern is an identified architectural style in the design guidelines and is allowed in the city. Additionally, the design guidelines state that flat roofs are often a part of, but not a prerequisite, of 21st century modern style. Homes wishing to utilize a modern 21st century architectural style, specifically with a flat roof, must meet the locational requirements for a flat roof and have a consistent roof form and pitch. The appellant also stated that the city has determined that the original architectural style of a home must be preserved. Staff's response is, the design guidelines require that all proposed additions and alterations much, I'm sorry, match the home's existing architectural style. However, the project is not required to retain the existing architectural style if the entire structure is redesigned to reflect a single, consistent architectural style, including uniform roof form, uniform roof forms and pitches. The project as proposed is designed to reflect two inconsistent roof forms and pitches. The appellant also states that the city has approved projects with flat roofs in areas where 30% of the homes on that block do not have a flat roof. The appellant provided examples included on the slide. Staff's response is that the R1 development standards and design guidelines were adopted in 2021. Projects that were already in a review process with the city were reviewed under the previous R1 development standards, which did not have restrictions on flat roofs. New construction projects can sometimes take years from beginning to end based on various factors such as availability of labor, materials, changes in design, et cetera. Therefore, it is plausible that projects that begun designing in 2021 are completing construction today in 2025. Staff confirmed that the examples provided by the appellant that have flat roofs predate the current R1 development standards and design guidelines.
Can I, can I, can you go back to that?
Of course, yes.
So, so the second one, I'm familiar with that house on there. That happens to be our mayor's house, okay? Or former mayor's house on there, the one on Downey Avenue. So that started in 2022. So the difference, so that's the year after the 2021 ordinance was passed or the, the design codes and so forth. So then, what makes it different? Is it the little swirvy things on the roof that make it for year 2023, when it was finally built to make it flat? The second house, straight across. So the year 2022 was already after the fact. And then on 2023, so all they did was take off the little swirvy thing and make it flat, so that's okay? I'm just asking.
Thank you, Chair Guerra. I have a response for that one. So the address that's being referenced is 123 Downey Avenue, which is Attachment G of the staff report. This home shows, per the applicant's letter, that it was built and remodeled in 2023. I have a little background on this and that I've done research on this for other reasons. I think also when I was assessing and developing what's today being called as a director's determination, which is really on behalf of staffs in all of our work together collaboratively and interpreting our code and design guidelines. I have a Google map in front of me, and I know you can't see it, but this house in particular was originally had parapet walls as the original home design. The parapet walls in, let me see, I'm looking at here. The, the parapet walls had more of a Spanish look, and don't quote me on the architectural style, but had, as the original design had, were not squared off. Maybe that's the easiest way to do it. The remodel squared off those parapet walls, but behind it are flat roof areas, and in front of it, it used to have a little tile shed roof as an architectural feature, which have been now removed and become just windows. So my short answer maybe to that long answer is that the original design included parapet walls that were not squared off, and the pictures that the applicant provided, those parapet walls have been squared off at the top, but were existing parapet walls.
Okay. That still begs my original question, though. Is it, why is 2023, why is it a flat roof allowed there? Does it meet all the other requirements from the block and all that other stuff?
Maybe to add on to my answer is the flat roof was not being created. The flat roof was in existing condition, and the parapet walls were in existing condition. The parapet walls were not horizontal on top. They had curvatures. Those curvatures have been removed, but the parapet walls were not introduced. The flat roof was in existing condition.
Okay.
I have a question, if I may, Mr. Rama. Does the DMC clarify what constitutes a flat roof?
Yes, Commissioner, there is a definition within the DMC section. Actually, we were just looking at it. I can read to you directly. It defines flat roof as a roof nearly horizontal and level. And there's also a figure within the DMC, which basically, it doesn't have any kind of a slope or a pitch. Typically, and this is not a part of the definition, but typically, flat roofs will still have a little bit of a slope to them for the purposes of draining water off of the roof.
Thank you.
All right. Okay. The appellant also stated that the city is incorrect in determining that there are three different roof styles and asserts for visual purposes, there are only two distinct roof types, the existing gable and the new flat roofs. Further, the proposed flat roofs are not visible from the public right-of-way. Staff's response is, having two roof styles does not comply with the R1 development standards and design guidelines, which do not permit more than one roof style on a single-family structure. If the project were to propose one consistent roof style that was not flat, then it would comply with the development standards and the design guidelines. Lastly, the subject property is a corner lot. The, both the gable and the flat roof are visible from two streets, Clancy Avenue and Appleby Street.
Could, could you go back to that one, that overlay photo with the different colors?
Of course.
Yeah, that right there, okay. So, so the blue is flat roof. This is under the new design to be, right? The wish design to be.
Yes.
So the flat is the only one that we have a problem with because you got the gable with the paraply, the yellow, and the green is already allowed. And so is the yellow, I guess, because you have the paraply wall. So we're only talking about the flat roof part of it.
Chair, if I could.
Go ahead.
Try and take a stab at it, and then Marissa can help also. The areas of concern, so to speak, are the flat roofs, the portion in blue that you mentioned. But within the portion in blue, it should be noted that the zoning code does allow for open patios or unenclosed patios. living area and only those portions are something that the commission needs to consider. The other topic that the commission needs to consider is the portion that is shown in yellow. That portion currently consists of a gable roof, but it will be concealed behind a parapet. So as seen from the street, that would look like a flat roof only because it'll be behind a parapet. So that is something that the commission.
And we're okay with that, is what I'm saying.
That is the question.
It's okay to have it. Even though it's concealed, we're okay with it. It meets code.
That is the, that is the item for your deliberation tonight. It is the staff's opinion that it gives the appearance of a flat roof. And if the commission so agreed or opined tonight that, that in fact meets the definition of a gable roof and therefore can continue to meet the design guidelines as well as the zoning code, that would be your determination to make.
Could you go back to one more photo before? Okay, so you have the majority of it. Could you use that as the majority of it is, you know, versus the entirety of it?
Chair Gara, I think that's an excellent question. That, that is, that would be subject to, that would be a subjective interpretation of the code. And I think that's exactly what we're, have encouraged the applicant to file this appeal for deliberation by the planning commission. I think we can, staff can assist in expanding that discussion if the commission so wishes. I think that's a very relevant point to elaborate on and discuss. I know there are additional slides that Marissa has.
Sure, go ahead, go ahead.
I, I don't want to stop your excellent, I think, starting of deliberations, but I also want to give the applicant.
You're the one that told us to interrupt.
Well, no, no. Well, because I know it's a lot to take in and you'll, people, I, I will forget by the end. I also want to make sure that the applicant has the opportunity to.
Absolutely.
Introduce. I think that's, the commission can be fair and look at staffs and also the applicant has relevant points for the commission to discuss. Thank you.
I didn't finish this one.
You had finished that one, I think. Yeah, I think you're on this one, yeah.
Thank you. All right. So the appeal of the director's determination can be considered by the planning commission and is subject to the findings included in resolution number 25-4052. A, as discussed in the staff report and in this presentation, findings A, B, and C are not met. A, specifically because the proposed facade remodel and the additions to the existing single-family home are not in compliance because the project introduces various roof styles leading to a disjointed and inconsistent appearance. The proposed additions do not reflect the existing architectural style or roof form. As a result, the project fails to either achieve an overall cohesive architectural design or remain consistent with the character of the existing home. For B, the proposed project is not in conformity with the DMC because the project with the different roof styles does not follow a singular architectural character and style. And the addition does not utilize the characteristics of the existing home. As we discussed, flat roof style is proposed for the, the additions, whereas the code only allows for flat roofs for open patios or when the existing home is entirely flat-roofed. Furthermore, the code only allows for the utilization of flat roofs within the city if 30% of the existing block has similar characteristics. As shown, the block where the subject property is located is characterized by pitched roof styles. And finally, C is not met because the subject property is, because the subject property is located on a corner lot at the intersection of Clancy and Appleby Street, and homes along these streets are predominantly characterized by pitched roofs. In contrast, the proposed project introduces a flat roof for the cer, for certain portions of the house, which is inconsistent with the established roof lines of the surrounding neighborhood. As a result, the proposed structure would not maintain visual continuity or compatibility with the adjacent properties in terms of roof line form and architectural character. And that, again, that is the specific findings that we would need to meet A, B, and C that, that we found were not met. So per DMC section 9806, the planning commission can either affirm the director's decision, modify, or reverse. Affirming the decision would result in the revision of the proposed roof alteration to be consistent with the home's existing architectural style, or to change the roof style of the entire structure as long it is, as long as it results in a cohesive, single roof style, again, but not a flat roof for reasons we've discussed. Reversing the original decision would result in approval of the applicant's proposed design. And then we have the modify, which you all can discuss today. Staff has reviewed the proposed project for compliance with SEQA and determined that the appeal is not subject to SEQA because it, it will not result in a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change in the environment, as there is no possibility it will have a significant effect on the environment and it is not a project as defined in the SEQA guidelines. A public notice was issued for this item. On July 24th, 2025, the notice of the pending public hearing before the planning commission was published in the Downey Patriot and mailed to all tenants and property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. Staff has received no correspondence in response to this public hearing notice. Therefore, staff recommends that the planning commission adopt resolution 25-4052, denying the appeal and affirming the determination made by the Director of Community Development that the proposed roof on property located at 9254 Clancy Avenue, Zoned R1, does not comply with the Downey Municipal Code and Single Family Residential Guidelines. This concludes staff's presentation. I am available for any questions. Thank you.
Okay. Does the planning commission have any other questions of staff?
Ms. Montero?
Yes.
Can you go back slide 39, please?
Of course. Okay. This one?
I want to take a picture of him with the double glasses. I like that, sir. Sorry.
The one that specifies on the left side were the DMC states and what, what the applicant. I put down 39, but I could be off maybe 37, if you don't mind.
So this is where the appellant's section starts. Was it before this, do you think?
You have a couple more, I think, that one that you had yes or no, kind of thing.
There are a lot of graphs.
Oh, go back, this one?
That's fine. Okay, I, I have a question. And I asked this question to the staff earlier. The, the pitch, the roof pitch that the applicant or the architect is designing, you mentioned is quarter inch per foot.
Yes.
Which is about 2%. Is that considered a flat roof?
I believe, sir, in the building code, the 2% slope is considered a flat roof, yes.
At 2%?
Correct.
So if the applicant would say, I'm going to do half inch per foot, he's no longer at 2%, he's greater than 2%. Hypothetically speaking, right?
Hypothetically, seeking the minimum requirement for building code for the water runoff is the 2%. So anything greater would be classified closely as a flat roof.
Do we know what is the existing pitch of the roof right now? Is it 3 to 12?
Correct, 312.
3 inch to 12 inch or 3 inch to 12 foot?
No, 12 inches, 1 foot.
Sure.
Yes.
Okay. So it's a rise over the run. It's 12 inches versus 3 inches.
Yes.
Okay. Can you go back to slide 30, please?
This is slide 30.
30, 3-0.
3-0.
This is it.
Oh, sorry. I gotta put on my glasses.
Put your other glasses on.
Right, right. So this is the roof in question that has a quarter inch per foot?
So.
This is the proposed, right? This is a, a rendering, I'm assuming?
Correct, yes. This is a rendering and these are proposed elevations. So yes, this is, this shows the, what we described as the three distinct proposed styles, one of which is existing, which is the green highlighted area, which is the 312 gable roof.
Okay. And, and the parapet wall, is it the one on the right side of the roof? I'm looking at it here. You referring to the parapet wall?
So the parapet is present both in the yellow and the blue highlighted areas.
Does it show on the top, top photo?
Oh, cor, yes, it does. So on the rendering, we see the slope above the garage and then a portion, which is the breezeway that will be converted into livable, that's gabled. And then right next to it, that is, again, it, it's combination, it's mixed of existing gable with parapet or flat roof with parapet, but everything we see to the right of that existing gable is a, a parapet wall.
Okay.
Does it have a laser?
Okay.
Where is it?
Oh, I see.
Yes, this is the gable right here, existing, and then this is all parapet.
Okay, thank you, thank you, Sir Ma. Clarify it for me.
I've never used the laser.
Okay. Anybody else have any further questions of staff?
I.
Okay.
I do, Mr. Chair.
Sure.
Ms. Montero, would you just for clarification, clarification purposes, will you talk and discuss a little bit more and elaborate more on the minimum 30% that is required?
Yes, great question. So typically, well, 30% of a block needs to have a flat roof in order for alteration in roof style or remodel for a specific property to propose a flat roof. So when we're looking at this property, this is on a corner, so we evaluated two blocks. So that's this portion here and then this portion here on Clancy and then, sorry, again, this portion on Appleby.
Yeah, the, the yellow ones right there.
So there are about, or not about, there are 15 homes, not including the subject property, outlined here and shown here. So 30% would be five homes. So if five homes on these two blocks had a flat roof, then the proposal for a flat roof would be allowed.
The, do we know if anyone else has applied for a flat roof concept in, let's say, the last 12 months? Is it a trend that is where the city in that area perhaps is headed? And are we not discouraging redevelopment and being more modern and more, more of a modern look community?
We're all fighting over that question. And I see Ms. Velazquez over there smiling. We're not fighting in a, in a good sense. I think that's a excellent discussion and a very important discussion that we've had internally with staff and during our meeting with the applicant. We also had a, a pre-meeting with our Chair Gara because there is, as I said in my introduction, there is a lot of investment that's being proposed in this project. Design is very subjective. If I just take my community development director hat for a brief moment, if that's even possible, it is, it is a, it is a very, how do I say it? It's, 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 it's a nice design, maybe just to put it nicely. But putting my community development director back on, we are charged with our codes and our very lengthy design guidelines that have a lot of detail that we're trying to address an issue upon adoption in 2021 and the years prior, where there is, and I explained this to the applicant, at that time, there was community input and that was part of the staff report, where mansionization was being addressed by staff and by city council at the time. And there was a feeling of, of wanting to keep Downey and the designs that are, the five prominent design styles of Downey, to keep them alive, if you will. And that's what, that was what initiated the design guidelines and ultimately, that was part of what was adopted in the design guidelines. And as part of that, flat roofs were discouraged. Now, to fast forward to your last part of your question is, do we want to discourage it? Have times changed? I think those are questions that the applicant brought up to staff that are, again, a good discussion. If times have changed and if there is a desire to change the design guidelines, we would need to have that policy direction by our city council because it is a citywide action and a change in course of direction that the city would be taking collectively. However, we did encourage the applicant to apply for this appeal because there is subjectivity as to what is a flat roof. And I think Commissioner Saicoli was bringing that up, is what is the, what is the, literally, what does somebody think, when somebody thinks of a flat roof, you think of it absolutely flat? What is the building code considered for a definition? Well, the building code technically doesn't have a definition of a flat roof, but we know that flat roofs, when they're proposed, they do need to have a 2% slope in order to allow water to drainage, in order to maintain the integrity of, of the roof. And that's in the building code application. We also know that flat roofs, in the sense of design guidelines, are defined as flat because visually, when you see it from far away, you won't be able to tell there's a 2% drainage. Most people just think of it as flat. It's very different from a gable roof where you have a gable wall resulting from two intersecting planes. So because there is so much subjectivity, we believe that the questions being asked by the commissioners now do contribute to there possibly being a greater discussion beyond just with staff saying no to this. Is there, is this such a unique situation in that there's a gable existing behind a parapet? And that in itself was not the same definition of flat roof that was being referenced in the design guidelines? And so, again, my answers tend to be a little in the longer period because I think there's a lot of content to digest. But that is really the difficult discussion here before the planning commission of, and again, I encourage us to get to the applicant, but I think I don't want to stall discussion because I think they're very good clarifications that the commission needs in order to fully vet this, this discussion and this issue.
Thank you, Ms. Waitron. One more question, and this is my last one to Ms. Montero. Just to clarify, within all the neighbors, has, no one has complained, no one has submitted objection to this project or, or we have folks that are against it?
No, you're correct. We haven't received any correspondence against the project.
Thank you.
And we, I asked this question earlier, and we sent it out to the 500-foot radius like we do for.
Correct. Property owners and tenants.
So it has been sent, the notification to them.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And if I may add that there's, we also have not reached the public hearing portion of today's meeting. I, I know there's potentially an audience member, so that would be part of public input if there is additional.
Okay. All right. So before I, I open the public hearing, any public, any planning commissioners want to disclose any pre-hearing scythes, pre-hearing discussions that the commissioners may have had about the project? I think Vice Chair Uva and I disclosed that we happened to meet each other there. We exchanged the sandwich through the window. No, we didn't. No, we didn't. But anything else?
I do, Mr. Chair. Mr. Guzman, the applicant actually.
I know there's potentially an audience member, so that would be part of public input if there is additional.
Okay. All right. So before I open the public hearing, any public, any planning commissioners want to disclose any pre-hearing scyes, pre-hearing discussions that the commissioners may have had about the project? I think Vice Chair Uva and I disclosed that we happened to meet each other there. We exchanged the sandwich through the window. No, we didn't. No, we didn't. But anything else?
I do, Mr. Chair. Mr. Guzman, the applicant actually called me in mid-June. He shared that he was not happy with the progress within our city. And I listened. I offered no opinion. I've never met the gentleman until I see him in the audience today. Yesterday, I did drive by the site. I was very curious and that's it. I'm sorry, one more thing, Mr. Chair. After the phone call from Mr. Guzman, he did offer to send an email and he shared very, pretty much the same renderings that we're all looking at today.
All right.
That's it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you so much, on there. So now, I'm going to go ahead and open up the public hearing. We have no further questions for, for you on there. So the public hearing is now open. Will the applicant or the representative please come forward to give testimony?
Thank you. Good evening, Planning Commission Chair, Vice Chair and members and everyone here in this auditorium. My name is Eduardo Guzman. I'm from EG and Associates Design Consultants. I've been doing architecture for the past 23 years. Been in City Downey for the past 20 years, you know, helping the community, helping residents, helping commercial buildings, residential. So the case here regarding the, the subject property, basically, we, we are proposing a flat roof, which is not, it's being visibly blocked by parapets on the new additions. The, the other part is not considered really a flat roof, it's considered an overhang when you got to the porch areas and things like that. So that's considered an overhang of the roof. It doesn't have the visibility of the whole structure being flat. You know, you have consistency of different volumes and architecture styles. So the question is, where do we draw the line on, on the design? You know, as, as doing architecture? Do we have one simple roof or we have a variety of different roof styles? I did submit a couple of images, renderings to, to help find a solution to this project. And so, so far, that's the reason we're here. I want to thank everyone for, for giving the opportunity to speak at this meeting and hopefully we can come to a resolution.
Just really quick, I'm Brenda Velazquez, the owner. I have been in this community for 28 years, so I own another property in another part of Downey. And so I appreciate...
Ms. Velazquez, can you come closer to the microphone, please? Thank you.
So I appreciate the opportunity to even come here and it was a recommendation from Ms. Witron, so I do appreciate that, even though it kind of sounds like it's a fight. We, we know that it's not. So I'm hoping that, that, you know, transparency and, and, you know, you viewing our point of view will allow us to proceed with the project. I've worked hard to get this property, just like I work hard for my other property. It's not a mansion, but it's, it's where I plan to retire and so I am putting a lot of effort into, into staying in this community. Like I said, I've been here for 28 years. My kids graduated from Downey High School. So I, you know, I want to stay here. I want to stay in this community and I want to contribute. I think making this house beautiful, which in my opinion, I think Eduardo's design is quite beautiful, would encourage the community to, you know, upgrade their homes or, you know, increase the property value. And we are in different times. We're not, you know, I know it was mentioned, Downey has a lot of ranch-style homes, but we're not in a ranch, we're in 2025. So I hope that you, you know, consider our proposed project to be approved. Thank you.
Is there any questions from the...
Who's, who's doing the slides?
I'm doing it. I have, I have.
Oh, can you go back to that photo, the rendering?
Yes.
Yeah, that one. I'm sorry, Mr. Guerra, you had some...
No, that's okay. Go ahead.
I really, no, I've, I've managed build commercial buildings for the agencies that I work for, where they had actually flat roofs, where they had reverse hall crickets and down drains, what have you. This house is really captures the, the, the modern era with the old era. And I think it's really fascinating, it was really very, very good, good work and, but maybe you could improvise upon the parapet wall, make it slightly shorter, and I understand the, the geometry behind it, it looks nice the way the, the height is. Maybe you can improve upon the roof pitch on the gable roof, so that way you don't have a flat roof. So 2%, you know what? I'm going to make it 2.1%. I'm just speaking hypothetically here. Of course, you can have, go back to the blackboard and what have you, you were drawing. Does the parapet wall has to be this high? Can you make it lower? And would you be able to see the existing gable roof, so now what people can see, actually the roof that does not give the appearance of a flat roof?
The, the reason for the, for the height of the parapet, which is about three and a half feet, that it matches to the top ridge of the, of the existing gable, it was to block the, the gable roof, so we will have the, changing the style from, from a typical gable roof to, to more a modern look aesthetics. That's the reason that we raised up, I'm proposing to raise the parapet to the top of the ridge to, to block the existing roof. Now, I, I wasn't trying to demolish the whole house or redesign the whole house, so that's the reason I have to play with the, the existing garage and the breezeway to maintain it at least, to, you know, to have a little bit of the old architecture with the new, but also give it a new update, because obviously this house was built 75 years ago and it hasn't been updated for 75 years. Did some painting, changed the walls. As you can see, on 2012, it was pretty rundown, it was outdated. They had the original wood shingles, it had windows, it had awnings. So, so when, when the property was purchased by Ms. Brenda, basically, they had done some minor modifications, painting, restucco, removed the siding on it, but it's still, it needed improvement in order, in order to get that, to that new contemporary modern look. Now, as far as the differences in roof, then, you know, there is, there has to be diversity in the different types of roofs, as is shown in the rendering of the roof plan. The, the reason is to, to have some sort of design, not just to have a square box, a shoebox that looks squared off, you know. That's the reason I have different heights in parapets. I have one higher, which is focused more on the entrance and then the rest of the house is lower, and it's about a foot or six inches difference in regards to the parapets. The back part is, it's part of the extension of the living room and it has a cantilever roof to cover the walkway in front of the living room. And then in the front, it's the same, same, same style of the back, basically. It just has a cantilever overhang eave, basically, of the flat roof over the, over the walkway, over the porch to prevent, you know, when people come in or gas, you know, they're, if they're, if they're knocking the door, they're not getting under the, you know, they're protected from the rain.
I want to ask a question following up on that with you, sir. I don't think the parapet's the problem, right? We're okay with the parapet, it's the, the flat part of it. So the parapet covering the gable, am I reading that wrong from staff? We're okay with that?
Thank you, Chair. Staff's determination letter does, does indicate that the parapet with the gable behind it is not consistent with the city's code and design guidelines.
Oh, it's not?
So that is subject to the Planning Commission's deliberation tonight. In addition to that, there's a small portions of flat roofs that are about maybe 2% that are in limited areas, where the applicant has indicated that those are more like overhangs. However, I should note that in staff's presentation, Ms. Montero did note that some of those areas are habitable areas and then the outer portions of the flat roof are more porch type of overhangs. Those port, non-habitable porch overhangs are permitted by the zoning code, so those could remain as flat. However, the habitable areas are designed currently as flat, meaning flat with drainage per the building code.
And let me, let me clear, one of my arguments was that I follow, we're not trying to come up with a different design guideline or anything, we're trying to follow the, the city guidelines. And then one of my arguments is, and in your, our one zone, design guidelines, you show a picture of a modern home and it has different types of roofs. If you look at it, and it's right there on, on the, on the screen, you have an arch roof, you have a, a, a slope roof, and then you have the, the modern look, which is a square box, and then you have a difference. So I did address it to, to, to planning regarding that, because I'm still following the guidelines of the city, except that where, where the staff couldn't make me, give me a resolution, that's the, the point that we're here for, you know.
Any other questions of the applicant before we can go start having some deliberations? Well, I want to hear from anybody else too. So, okay, go ahead. Any questions of the applicant?
Okay, so, hmm, the way it's proposed now, you created this set of plans, you know what the cost of the construction is more or less going to be, I'm assuming you have a general idea. If, let's just say hypothetically, that this didn't go your way tonight and you had to redo everything, are we talking a lot of money, a lot of time, a lot of, it's obviously going to be major changes to the roof? Or is it just aesthetically, you don't want the normal traditional roof, you want these different looks? I don't know. Walk me through your thoughts.
So, so we did...
I just may interject quickly. I think that question is well-intentioned, but I would just add, that's not a pertinent factor for the decision tonight to the commission. So that's beyond the scope of the commission's consideration for this particular decision.
Couldn't, couldn't they give us... I, I disagreed in the standpoint that, I want to hear what their thoughts are. I, I understand, oh, wait a second, you're, you're giving me a dirty look, but you haven't even heard what I'm about to say. So I understand the first part of it, but the second part is, you know, to walk us through the thought process of the changes that you would have to make, that is pertinent, I think. I, I don't know how it's not pertinent, just their thought.
I do not mind answering the question if I volunteer the information. Yes, of course, it would cost more money. It would take more time for Eduardo to redesign. We would have to discuss what look I want. So yes, the, the money is an issue. Right now, I, I can't move into the home. I'm carrying, you know, two mortgages. So that, that is an issue for me. And yes, aesthetically, I mean, I really do love this design. I, it just feels like I'm so limited with a property that I own. It's my home. It's where I'm going to be, it's where my grandchildren are going to swim in that pool. And so I, yeah, it is also aesthetics. I, I love the design. I think a lot of other homeowners in the area would be encouraged to follow and to beautify, you know, that area even more.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would just want to bring up a point that, you know, time is money. So we started this process, approached the city in May the 25th or 28th, I believe, we had, you know, we, we reached out to the counter and then after that, so to today's date, it's already two months lost. So Ms. Velazquez has been paying the mortgage for the last two months, you know, the mortgage, basically. But if we didn't need to re-design and everything, it will be losing again, going through, back to planning and going through reviewing and everything time-wise.
Thank you. You have a question? Yes, sir?
Yes, sir. Mr. Guzman, you, you mentioned earlier that you, it's your opinion that the 21st century modern style that's being promoted by our city is pretty much what you're bringing to the table, three different types of roofs. I am curious, when you brought this to planning and that's your opinion of, of seeing both designs, what was their response? Right, three roofs, which is 21st modern, and it's been adopted. What has been their response to you?
Well, their response basically said that the whole overall look of the project was aesthetically a flat roof. It looked like a flat roof. So my, my contradiction to that was like, well, I'm following the design lines, you have a picture there on your, on your, on your guidelines that it shows a modern home with square box, flat roof, it has different type of roofs in there, you have an arch, you have an gable, a, a, an angle, a 3 to 12 or 4 to 12 roof. And there's other properties here that have the same aesthetics. So I was trying to resolve it before we even got to Planning Commission, but it never went somewhere because obviously Ms. Witron or the staff, I think they, they just didn't want to take that decision. They said that I found a lupo on the, on the, on the guidelines or on the municipal code, so that's the reason we're here.
Thank you. I would like to hear from Ms. Witron, perhaps a little bit more on that.
Yes, just maybe to quickly summarize what was staff's reaction. Staff's initial assessment of the project is what was included in the staff report, that the parapet wall that is proposed to be built in front of a gable roof conveys an appearance of a flat roof.
But, Ms. Witron, I'm sorry to interrupt, but it's not a flat roof. It's just the appearance?
Correct. So that subjectivity is not outlined in the code for the staff to take that, that liberty to go against the spirit of what the design guidelines was trying to prevent. I'll just be clear. It's, it's not staff's discretion to broadly reinterpret something that we know for certainty that was going to be approved on a limited basis, only on the condition when, flat roofs would be allowed, only on the condition when the blocks would be at 30% flat roofs existing. Because staff doesn't have that liberty to exercise that discretion, that is before the Planning Commission. So as much as we are in the spirit of expediting and assisting and not wanting people to pay to mortgages, that doesn't please us as staff either. We did our best to expedite it as a public hearing item to today, as you know, that requires staff to prepare a very comprehensive determination letter with findings that we can then include in the staff report. We were able to quickly prepare the staff report because the letter that we provided basically became the staff report. We were thinking of that. How do we not delay this multiple months? So the, Mr. Guzman made reference to staff encouraged them to submit this appeal and that is correct. I've, I've been transparent at that with the Planning Commission, because the discussion before the Planning Commission, and I think Chair Guerra commented on this prior and other commissioners is, is, Commissioner Legaspi is, there is no flat roof behind the parapet, but it gives the illusion. Now, can the Planning Commission have a discussion as a body and make some type of interpretation? Possibly, but that is what tonight's item is about.
Thank you for that, Ms. Witron. And just one more. I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Gera. Just to clarify for, for, for my understanding, that the overall issue today is not whether or not we, we have a flat roof. It's clear that we're, we have a flat roof, right, Mr. Guzman?
Yes.
Okay, so it's just the appearance? And other than the, we're not, we don't have the 30% of the community building such a, a project? Is there any other issues?
If I can simplify it, there's two discussion items before the commission broadly. It's a very long staff report. One is, does, is a planning commission in concurrence or do you disagree that a gable behind a, a parapet wall, is it a flat roof or is it not? If the planning commission interprets that is not a flat roof, then that is one part of the item before you. The second part is the areas that are actually, if you can bring up the PowerPoint that Ms. Montero brought up, is the areas that are in blue, there are some areas that are in blue that are actually designed as 2% flat roofs. That is the second part for your deliberation is, is what, how, how to interpret that.
One more, one more back. One more. Go one more back, this one is the one that...
And so, and hopefully that, that simplifies this very complex presentation and...
Okay, all right. We're going to, we're going to move on, we can have deliberations in a moment. Okay, thank you so much for that. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Anything else you want to add? If there's... Anything else you want to add, if there's any rebuttal, so. May staff confirm if there's any correspondence in favor or opposition? I think we did that before, and you said no. Uh, there's some lady in the audience, ma'am, we have a public hearing, would you like to say something? No? Okay, all right. So nobody here to speak in favor or opposition with that. So, uh, with that, I'm gonna go ahead and close the public hearing and go into deliberation. So, the public hearing is now closed, so it's now time for us to deliberate. And I just wanted to say a couple of things, you know, the mansionization thing, okay, that, that, you know, the, the cat's out of the bag, okay, that, we've known that for years. So when we did in 2021, "We, the city," I had nothing to do with it, finally, we're trying to make some design rules on this and, and what, what to do to continue the different variations of the neighborhood. So, and the, the applicants, to me, examples are very valid. It's hard to say with all those houses being flat roofs, you can't have that, but it is the 30% neighborhood thing is also, it is part of the code, that's where we, we have this issue here. If you drive down the street, you have a mansion and you have a ranch style just down the street from them. You have big houses and you got little houses on there. They all have gable, they don't have flat roofs, but they're totally different styles. You turn that corner there and there's, it's like, da-da, and then the, the thing out there. So, you know, there's already a discrepancy in there. What I'm trying to see, if there's any way that within the code, um, there, that we can reverse this decision, in my opinion. I think there might be certain things that we can do, uh, I think that's one of them. Is the gable behind it not considered flat? I feel for it, because those examples of those homes are very valid, it's like, what do you mean I can't have this? There's 150 of those homes in Downey, uh, and so forth. So maybe we can consider that, that we saw that, maybe the majority of the roof is flat, maybe that's something we could interpret it from that, so, to allow that to happen. So maybe, uh, those are deliberations on there. I think the gable behind a paraply would, you know, also is, is a compromise that we might be able to do, I don't know. I'm just saying, the only part that's bad is the blue part, the yellow and the green are good, you know, so that's more than, the majority is all good. So, I don't know, I'm just, I, I'm trying to find it, I think it's a beautiful home, beautiful design, uh, how do we, how do we keep it in keeping the integrity of our rules and our code? Uh, I mean, to change the code is not gonna happen, so how do we find, uh, how do we do a, a standing, a finding here tonight, um, there within that? So maybe that's one discussion. If the majority of it, that's silent in the code, if the majority of it is, is, you know, is not flat, is that, is that okay?
Right, and the, and portions of that blue section are within the code that are okay, so not even all of that blue is in violation. So I think we should, my opinion is we should try to put our heads together and come up with a way to, to reverse the existing decision.
Right.
Because the majority of it does comply. It's a small portion that doesn't.
Could we, could you put that one there with the, yeah, there, that, I think that's important for us to see, it's, like, yeah, this is the one that I keep on there, so, because part of the blue there that we're looking at, it already conforms because it's outside, okay, so it doesn't come into play. So I think, am I correct on that? So why do we, we had talked about it, that part of this blue here, it's hard to talk about, but part of that blue there and part of the blue up there, over there are, are outside, they're just roofs, right? So that's considered okay by the code?
It's not living area, right?
No, it's not living area, that's what I think, yeah.
Chair, you're correct, and I'm trying to do with this laser pointer here-
Okay, we can see it, yeah.
Identify the areas you're talking about. So this section here is, uh, an open patio-
Okay.
-and that may have a flat roof within the zoning code. Similarly, this portion here is, uh, also open, it is unenclosed and may have a flat roof within the zoning code. Some areas of concern were this part of the proposed expansion, which is part of the living room, and then this part is, I think, a bathroom, uh, expansion, and this one is part of an enclosed, uh, home expansion as well.
Where, where's the front of the house?
Front of the house is, this is, um, the front of the house.
Right, right. So the green section is, is the part that it's, it's, that looks, that looks pitched, that one's not flat, even in all the drawings, that looks pitched, right?
Chair Guerra, the green area is existing gable that would remain.
Okay.
That, that area is existing gable, yes.
And the yellow is covered as gable, it's cable, but, uh, gable, but it's covered by the, the paraply.
Yes, Chair, this is also the existing gable roof. It will cover, it will be covered by a parapet, if you can follow along with my laser pointer here.
So you have, you have, I don't know what this, you know, you're looking at, 70% of it is gonna stay from the pitches and everything else, you're putting a paraply to cover the front part, but the majority of it is, is, is okay right now, right? So it's the new part on there. So can't we use a majority rule and say, hey, if the majority is not flat, I mean, I know the appearance of it, but you saw, I, I, I don't know, I was looking at some of the, the examples there. So the appearance still looks like it, that it's flat, but it's not really, and we're saying it's okay, and we did that in 2023. So after, two years afterwards, and we didn't bother to look at the 30%, I mean, it's before your time, I'm not blaming anybody, and so forth, but I just look at those things and I'm like, how can we not say that a paraply covering up the gable is still not flat? Because we're just hiding it.
Correct.
Chair Guerra, I just want to clarify that the example provided that has a paraply from 2023 had an existing paraply that, and a flat roof, that was not a new condition that was added during the remodel, but I, I, uh, maybe just to add to additional context to aid in your deliberation as a collective commission, uh, if the planning commission, uh, I, I heard the mention, the word mentioned of reverse, if the desire of the commission is to reverse staff's decision, uh, with the commission would, during deliberation, uh, provide justification, ideas of why, uh, you are interpreting, for example, the gable roof behind the paraply, not a flat roof, you have that discussion, you, in that discussion, we'll take notes, uh, you can then direct us to come to a future meeting to come with an alternate resolution to reverse staff's decision and to elaborate on the commission's deliberation on your new findings. Um, and during that time, if the applicant wishes to proceed with the plan check process and pay the fee, they could do so at risk, uh, knowing that we would come at the next planning commission meeting with the revised resolution, but we do need the commission collectively to continue deliberation, and if you so desire, provide the justifications for us to then take those notes and be able to come back with an alternate resolution. I just wanted to provide you so you can help us, uh, if that's the desire.
Okay, that's fair enough. I'd like to hear from the other commissioners, and what are your thoughts on there?
I, I got a lot of thoughts here.
Okay. You're a smart man, you should have a lot of thoughts, sir.
And, and no two glasses are needed for that.
You never gonna leave that one.
I think, uh, what the applicant-
If, if I can ask, uh, to get closer to the microphone, because I'm more than likely, staff will be referencing this video, uh, at a future date, or maybe not, uh, I just want to make sure that we have the proper recording so we can take notes if we need to.
Sure. Okay, so, uh, can you hear me better now? Extend the microphone. Nonetheless, um, I see here a, uh, a great architect, architectural work, um, and, um, I've been living in Downey for 25 years, 26 years, going on 26 years, and I've seen in Downey, um, changing periodically, uh, to a, a regular standard home, a ranch-style home, and what we see is a rectangular box coming up, all over the place. Big, huge home, set back on all, both sides, nothing, hardly any green in the front or the sides, and a box, had no shape, no style whatsoever, and it went on changing. This, to me, is really, looks like a masterpiece. From an engineer to an architect, this is really very nice work. Now, going back to the, the fact that DMC does not allow or does not prohibit paraply walls, not that I'm aware of, um, having the gable roof behind the paraply wall at a 3 to 12 pitch, is a 3 to 12 pitch, it's not a flat roof. It's, 3 to 12 is 3 to 12, not quarter inch to 12. What I see on the other side where the garage is on this rendering, is a quarter inch to 12, that constitutes a flat roof, fine, maybe we can work around that. And I think the, the heritage in Downey has been changing dramatically for the last 20 years or 25 years. Modern homes are coming in, whether we like it or not, changes are coming to Downey, we have new entrepreneurs, new people want to live in here, they want to be different than the regular house next door to them, they want something extraordinary, they want something different, they want something live, this is really very nice. Why we are not allowing them to do that? Besides, 110,000, 120,000 people in Downey, you're not gonna have every single house like this on every block. Maybe, as a matter of fact, on Suha Avenue in Arrington, there's a similar house like this, it's a white house, just like, almost just like that. It's got the gable roof on the back, it's got the front paraply walls, and it's got the glass garage. It's beautiful. And I think it's time for us to move forward with the era and, um, make minor changes to this design, and if we have to do a, another, um, discussion regarding what we need to do for a future city of Downey with the city council, why don't we do that? Allowing this style of homes, um, wherever it needs to be.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Hector?
I agree with, uh, with Mr. Saucali, in the sense that we do have, times are changing.
Could you speak into the microphone, or, I don't know if it's on?
Is it off?
No, it's off.
Okay. Yeah, no, I agree with Mr. Saucali, there's a lot of things that, that we're evolving, there, times are changing, uh, it is, I, I agree, it's a beautiful, uh, design and, um, I think if there was any, any type of modifications, or we can have a discussion later, or if it can come back, um, I definitely would hope that they would be in, uh, in agreement because we, we want to work with them, uh, and I can see us, us here, we're trying to make it work for them as well, and, and I, I agree with this.
Good, good. I've pretty much expressed my thoughts, I, I think that we need to try to make this work for them and come up with, um, something that says that it's the vast, the greater percentage of what's before us meets the city code sections, it's just a small percentage of this roof line that doesn't, and can we work with that and allow that to go forward?
Okay. I got one question for, for the staff real fast, and I'm sorry, Mr. Legaspi on there. So looking at this picture right here, the garage roof, that's not considered flat, right? Okay, it's not, so, because you, Mr. Saucali, you said that was flat, and I just wanted to clarify it.
No, it's a quarter inch per foot, according to the DMC, it's a flat roof.
If I may clarify, Chair Guerra and, and Commissioner Saucali, the green area, um, yes, that one, thank you, Swati, that area is, is, uh, staff's assessment is that that area is gable, we have not called that flat.
Okay, so that's a good thing, the whole, the garage is not, is not flat, it's the other stuff, it just looks sort of flat, but, from a layperson like myself.
Or with the purple walls. But behind the blue section, this is where the gable roof is, right?
It's this part.
Okay.
The, the yellow, the yellow's got the, the gable roof with the paraply wall covering it, to making it look that way.
Okay, so the purple wall, it makes it look like it's flat.
So, so the only part we're really talking about that doesn't comply is the flat roof, is the blue, the two sections of the blue. Okay, so that was, and then if you look, again, looking at the over top, over top, it's not even a word, but from the top, it's this one here, the majority of it, a vast majority of it complies with code. It's a little bit of the A, uh, the, the blue, okay, and a little bit of the blue down below. So those are the only two sections that don't, don't comply, because the one on the right, from what I understand, and please correct me, the one on the right, the blue thing sticking out there, that's, uh, that's an open area, so that one's allowed, no?
The other way around, this part is enclosed-
Okay.
-and has a flat roof proposed currently.
Right, and it's the one-
It's this one here-
Okay.
-that is, uh, unenclosed, it's open and can have a flat roof.
Okay.
You see, um-
That one.
-walls over here-
Right.
-this part is enclosed and per the code should not have a flat roof.
But isn't that ironic?
What is the pitch on that one?
You can't see-
What is that pitch on that one?
A half, oh, quarter, quarter inch to 12 inches.
That's the one that has quarter inch per foot?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so, if that, to me, it seems like a very easy fix. If the applicant make that half inch per foot, he's, he's, it's no longer flat roof.
Again, Commissioner Saucali, if I can just remind that deliberation is with the commission, we can ask questions, um, I, I, I think, uh, staff recognizes that there's room for interpretation, so I, I don't think we disagree that, that the commission could possibly interpret it different from staff. However, um, we do ask that you provide us those, uh, justifications, uh, maybe, perhaps as a statement, uh, because if you ask us, I think we have to respond based on our letter, because that is based on the code and the design guidelines. However, um, we understand that this is a topic that's subjective in nature, and, uh, the code, maybe to go back to the, the question at hand, is a flat roof in the Downey municipal code is a roof nearly horizontal or level. So I think the code does recognize that a flat roof is not literally zero pitch, that it's, has a nearly horizontal or sometimes level. But I, I think the, the question that Chair Guerra has brought up earlier is, uh, and I heard also Chair Uva, Vice Chair Uva, is the yellow area has gables and it has a paraply in front, and perhaps to start, the commission can look at that and decide collectively, if possible, whether, uh, the interpretation should be different, should it be, uh, that it's not a flat roof because it has a gable and has a paraply in front? If that's the case, then I think to, uh, Chair Guerra's point is, and Uva, is, is there something, because the majority, I heard the word majority being mentioned, could the commission then, uh, continue that discussion about what does majority mean? Again, I'm giving you ideas based on what I've heard, uh, but it really is, uh, staff's position is still the staff report, but we do acknowledge that there's a high level of subjectivity before you.
So, I got a question based on that points on there. So you can't see that from the street, isn't part of the code is what you can see from the street? Because of that blue part back there, why do we care that it's flat? If everything else is pitched and, and, you know, the yellow and the green and everything else on there, so there's that small portion in the back, and, yeah, it's small on the front, but, how is that, I don't know, how can we, can we interpret that the majority of it you can see from the street? Or anything you can see from the street? I, I, I'm not an expert on the code, but doesn't it have to be seen from the street versus that? I mean, I, you know, when I drove around the neighborhoods today, I didn't see too many flat roof houses, but I don't know what I was looking for then either, you know? So, I mean, what if we, there's flat roofs behind the gables that we didn't see and stuff like, so all I'm saying, I'm trying to make a determination, so, I guess my question is, so we can have, you know, big, bold statements of what we want to do for staff to help the staff out, does it have to be seen by the street to consider it flat?
Chair, going back to the way the definition is worded in the zoning code, it doesn't say as seen from a right-of-way or as seen from the outside, it simply just states that, oh, I don't have it, it, it is almost level or flat. I know that's not the question that you're asking, I'm just limited to reading the definition in the zoning code.
I can elaborate a little bit on that question, there is a, a Downey municipal code that calls for 360 architecture, uh, which, uh, calls for staff when conducting design reviews for us to look at facades, roof forms, pitches, materials, and details that are visible- and details that are visible from the public right-of-way or abutting properties. It says, "In addition, should utilize characteristics of the style of the existing approved home." So this is again, charging staff per the code to look at 360 architecture, not just public right-of-way but also adjacent properties.
That code has one key word there, what's visible, okay? You said it in your thing. If it's not visible, does that matter?
If, sorry, Commissioner Gera and Director Whitton, if I could add, there's another code section, so our DMC code sections are comprised of multiple areas, right? DMC code section 9312.08 subsection B20, it says, "For additions, flat roof elements may be incorporated when the existing home is entirely flat-roofed." A subsection below that says, "Flat roofs shall be permitted for open patios," meaning open patios are not hallowed area. So unless the entire home is flat, you could have additions and still incorporate a flat roof. I, in staff's opinion, this example of code sections, it states that you can't mix two roof styles, flat and a gable roof, unless the entire home is entirely flat.
But you could with a parapet wall? You couldn't hide it? Isn't that what some of the other ones that we have are hidden?
The, the yellow area with the parapet wall is a question, is could they have the gable with the parapet in front of it?
Right.
That's what we need the planning commission to determine. If you determine that you don't consider that a flat roof, then I think that's what we would need a discussion from the commission to direct staff that we should interpret it differently. So perhaps I would suggest that the commission focus on the yellow area first and then move on to the blue areas.
Well, okay.
Again, just a suggestion.
So here's my big, bold statement on there. I want to consider if the majority of it is, complies, that, you know, that you're talking a small portion of that. I want to make sure that we, how do we make this compliant if it's the majority is, is on there? So, I don't want, I mean, it's, you know, I don't want to go back and change and then you're going to go to the council and it's going to take a year and a half to change the code.
So the question is, if you're asking staff, does the yellow area comply? Staff in the, in the determination before in the staff report has determined that it doesn't. So that's staff's answer, however, knowing what I've heard today and from the applicant, are we still recording?
Yeah, we're still recording.
Thank you. Make sure we have the recording. This is a complex discussion, I want it recorded. Does the commission want to discuss whether or not the yellow area should be considered a flat roof or not? If you don't consider that a flat roof, then you reverse staff's decision and then we then take that and can come back to a future meeting to determine that that is not a flat roof based on the commission's discussion.
Well, under any definition, it's not a flat roof, right? It's got, it's, it's got, you know, it's got a cable, it's, it's a cable roof, I mean, gable roof, right?
Again, perhaps asking staff, I, I really, I think we really are receptive to being asked questions, but I think at this point we need statements from the commission.
In my view then to the planning commission is, it's obvious to me that it's, it's not a flat roof. You know, I mean, we're going by definition already, so you don't want me to choke to that.
One constitutes a flat roof, okay? A level roof is a flat roof. That means if you put your, your level, you know, the bubble, if it's in the center, that's level. If you have 2% fall, that's not flat. The streets are 2% crossfall from either side for the drainage. So the roof has a 2% fall from either side for drainage purposes. Where, where do you draw the line for a flat roof? Flat roof when the water is not moving anywhere. In this case, in my opinion, 2% is not considered a flat roof. It has a slope, a 2% slope.
So what's the wishes of the planning, what do you guys, what do we want to do?
In my opinion, this is not a flat roof.
Okay, all right.
I would, I would agree with my fellow commissioner. I think it's the appearance that is the issue here, but the, the roof is not flat. So as Ms. Whitton has asked, let's, let's start with that being a discussion. The yellow part, can we all agree it's not flat, right? And therefore, that should not be an issue.
Well, that's never, that's, that's not even a discussion. There's no, it's not flat, I mean, under any interpretation of it. Just if you can hide something, but it doesn't change it, it's going to be, it's not flat. Neither is the green, okay? So both of those are not flat. The only one thing we're talking about is the blue. And, and, you know, just because it's, I mean, the visibility part, that's what kind of, I mean, how many houses in Downey do we have walls around the whole property? You can never see the roof, okay? Then you can't even figure out where the roof is on there. So, okay, so why don't we do that? All right, so we can make an interpretation that the majority of this is not a flat roof, whatever, so the yellow and the green are not flat. Is that, are you guys, let's go baby steps, is that something that the whole planning commission can agree on?
I agree with that.
Okay, so Mr. Saucali, okay, so all right, so we have a 5-0 to the recording.
Can we take a, maybe an informal quick poll on that so we can...
We just did. Everybody just said that.
Do you want it to be more on the record?
I, I was looking down, so I didn't see that.
Everybody, all five of us said that yes, we can agree on that.
Thank you for that clarification. I was taking some notes, I didn't see nothing.
Okay, yeah, all five of us just said, we can agree that, that the yellow and the green are not flat, okay? The only thing we're talking about now is the blue. Okay, so how do we want to, can it be interpreted from a legalese standpoint? Let me ask this of staff, and can, can the majority be interpreted as, as disagreeing with you? If the, I'm not talking about majority of us, I'm talking the majority of the, the site.
I think if you look at the square footage of those blue areas in proportion to the rest of the house, I think it, it's very, is very minor compared to the rest.
Yeah. I don't know what the square foot...
So what I'm hearing, Vice Chair Gera and perhaps concurrence from Vice Chair, I'm sorry, Uva and Chair Gera.
I was going to say, hey, something happened in the last thirty seconds. It's all good.
Hybrid, Vice Chair Uva and Chair Gera is that when the code is referencing that the entire home, in order to be used, to use flat roofs, the code says the entire home must be flat roofs. What I'm hearing from, from, from the dais here is that entirely is really in the code is intended to meet, meet majority.
Correct.
Correct.
Are we, informal poll, look, it's on there, are you, Mr., Mr. Saucali?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so five of us agree that that's, that's the majority of that. The majority would constitute not a flat roof. The majority of the roof. Why are you looking at us funny now?
No, I'm, I'm taking it in.
Did I stutter?
No, just taking it in.
Yeah.
Can we go back to that slide with the yellow and blue and all that?
Yeah.
No, not that.
No, the one before that, right, there we go.
Okay, so I'm looking at the blue, and you got the blue on the side here, says the proposed addition for the foyer, bathroom, living rooms, mentioned horizontally flat roof with a quarter inch per foot roof, okay? If you go back to quarter inch per foot, that is the 2% that I was referring to. Is that constitutes a flat roof? Again, the wording here is not to include a flat roof with a quarter inch to 12. Quarter inch to 12 is not a flat roof.
So what I'm, what I'm hearing from the dais and perhaps for maybe another informal poll is that the blue areas, because they're sloped to them, are not considered flat roofs.
That is correct, because you have a slope of 2%.
I, I am not qualified to know that. In other words, I don't know that.
I give you a scenario.
Yeah, sir, yeah.
On the street, when you drive on the street? The crossfall is 2%, of course, and more, plus.
Okay.
The reason I do 2% because it's a minimum slope allowed the water to flow by the asphalt.
Okay.
That's what you have here, 2%.
Okay. All right, thank you for that. So, what are you saying? You want to, you want to, we have two things...
I'm going back to the original, said that we said that...
It's not flat.
It's not, it's not.
The, the world is round, it's not flat. We have proof of it, just by looking at this slide.
There you are.
We're going to take a picture of this slide, okay, forever. This will be the slide. Now, this will be the slide for you guys someday, right here, this slide. Okay, all right, so we have two things that we agree upon, okay? Do we want to make a motion to direct staff? Number one is, we are, we are upholding the appeal, uphold, yes, we are upholding the appeal, the claim that this is not flat, this, this particular one, so that way it's not against the code, it's not flat, we're making that finding. And number two, that the majority of it, even if it wasn't, that the majority of it should constitute, should constitute the, the code. The, the majority of, of, you guys know...
Going off that roof, yes.
Right, is that, is that clear to the staff? Is that, is that clear as a motion?
Yes, Chair, I would just repeat what was already mentioned, that if that is the direction you would like to go, staff needs to bring back an updated resolution with updated findings in order for you to make that motion. So what we...
Wait, 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 no, we, I want to make a motion, what's before us today is to deny or, or uphold the, the staff's decision. So we want to say, okay, we want to uphold it. So we can vote on that.
Chair, no, the resolution today is prepared so that you are supporting the director's determination.
Okay.
Upon your deliberation, you're moving in the direction of reversing the director's determination.
Okay.
For which we need to bring back an updated resolution.
Okay, all right, and we can do that in the next meeting then?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so I'll make a motion that we bring it back, but with the direction that we want to overturn that decision based on the facts that we just gave. Is that, okay, everybody got it? Okay, you guys are good? Is there, you guys, I'll make that motion, is there a second on that? Anybody want to make a second?
I can second it.
Okay, you guys understand what we're doing? Everybody all clear?
Yes.
All fired, okay? All the heads shook yet, so, okay, just from that standpoint.
So Chair, just to clarify, your motion would have the effect of reversing or directing staff to come back with a resolution reversing the determination of the director, supported by the requisite findings, based on the discussion of the deliberations of the commission tonight?
Correct. Correct, that we find it not to be flat and the majority of, of the, of the project not being flat.
And I would just query staff, just to confirm that they're comfortable that it has all the, enough detail to a, to come back or to turn to the commission with the, the desired resolution.
Yes, if, if I can just ask, in the motion to include that staff can refer to the discussion, the motion and the discussion and deliberation by the commission...
Sure.
...to draw upon and draft those findings.
Sure, that sounds good to me.
Thank you for that.
Okay, all right, that's, I'm good with that, so, thank you. Yeah, I think that, I think we're all clear on the two things that we just did. And is that, and will this set precedence, precedence in the future? Because we use the majority of it, Mr. Funk or Ms. Whitton or...
Chair, can we, I was requesting if we might take a five-minute break just to go over the findings and see if anything else needs to be identified tonight before we can say yes, we can make the findings.
We can do that, we're on the home stretch on there. Sorry, folks, it's going to take another three to five minutes, okay? We're on the home stretch. I have to use the restroom.
Thank you.
Okay, good, perfect.
Oh, what am I doing?
These chairs are vulnerable. They might have like a level or something where you can make them recline, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I have a comfortable chair too.
Thank God the doctor's name was earlier. Yes, we do. We have a, a very sharp engineer. Your comments are just great.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah.
I've been loving architects all the time, I've been designing all the time.
It is, really gets...
You know, they want to stay in, in the, in the, you want to make any, come on, people want to spruce up things, you know? Different.
That's funny, you're thinking really nice and make it different.
Yeah, this is, it costs a lot of money to build.
Oh, for sure, for sure.
Not your sta, your, your typical, you know, gable roof, boring.
Right.
Just so you know, in order for you to speak again, we have to reopen the public...
I know, just keep...
I know, and we can't, we can't, and we have to, he has to reopen the hearing for you to speak, so sorry.
I, I, I'm aware of that, but I'm not my fridge ready over here.
Okay, okay, okay.
Wow, I can't believe it's this late.
Yeah.
I haven't had dairy yet.
Yeah, he's arrived.
Just now looked at it, it's like, wow.
It's almost nine.
And I got to get up early, we have that, that waff thing at eight.
I've got to work tomorrow.
When I was a little, we used to stay at the council meeting till like 1:00 in the morning. I come back, it's on Tuesday.
I'm sure you had some of those kind of days, yeah.
We had, we had a couple, because we used to have a couple God flies, so we had a couple. So, yeah, yeah. Yeah, and there were, a lot of people yelling at us. My very first council meeting, okay, I'll never forget that, came out there and it was, it was packed, and our city manager came in the back and said, "We have never had this big of a crowd." It was when the legal demolition of Bob's Big Boy.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so my very first council meeting, so we're in the back, it's all this, there's TV cameras and this place is packed, and he comes back there, our experienced city manager, Jerry Kay, biggest crowd we ever had. I'm like, God, this is my first council meeting, I've never even said hello. And, and it's over, so I came out, and then when it was my comment to the beginning, I'm like, oh my God, that's so nice of you all to come for my first council meeting. Everybody cracked up, you know? They were sitting out there, my first council, yeah, yeah, so...
Now, I remember, because I was, I was living in Downey at the time when they like demolished third of it or something like that, and it stopped. I said, oh my God, it destroyed Bob's Big Boy, that's iconic, what are they doing?
It was, the guy was 10 feet from dying. So the, the owner hired, he couldn't get a demolition permit from the city, so he went...
They were freak, right?
But that, yeah.
Yeah, that's very Yachtis.
So he went to, so he went to, it wasn't Home Depot, it was All-American at that time. And he hired a couple day laborers, and he had a forklift. So they had not even turned off the power there. So the poor guy is on the forklift, like ramming it, with a live wire. And so somebody drove by and called the police, and the police came there and kind of stopped it on there, but half of it was already, you know, so that was on a Sunday and the council meeting was on Tuesday. But yeah, no, that was the very, the guy was going to die. They prosecuted him.
That one was Stamatoy, I think, Sariotti.
Yeah.
Those are two brothers.
They're two brothers, they don't speak to each other ever since then.
And they don't speak to each other, right.
Yeah, yeah, and so that was, so then, so then we made the commitment, that was the worst deal, that was the worst deal in economic development we've ever done for the city. Just in terms, for example, to bring Portos here, it was when we had economic development money, it cost us $500,000 out of our economic development funds to pay for the parking lot, okay? But they spent $13 million on that, okay? So that's a good deal, right? And by the way, and it was a three to one vote, Anne Baer voted against it because she thought we can't give that money to one person. It's like, and then Governor Brown took the money anyways, right? But on the project for Bob's Big Boy, we wanted to restore it the way it was, and it was going to be like two and a half million dollar project, and everything got taken out, cleaned, and put back in. So it was, that's the original stuff, the original floor, original, that cost us $900,000, other than a $2.2 million project. So that's a terrible return on our investment, but we wanted it. So we, you know, we, and so we voted on the council to do that for $900,000. But yeah, we had, at the end, because we didn't use it all like idiots, because we were very anti-development when I got on the council, and it was just real conservative council, good people, just very conservative. So we had, all this money never got used. So, the original vote was two to two to bring Portos. It was Rick Trejo and myself voting yes, and Anne Baer and Dave Gaffin got nervous about it, so he voted no. It was a tie vote, so it didn't go on. So then the next couple of days, I took Dave Gaffin with Raul Portos, we went, took him to Burbank store, showed him this is what could be. So we had to convince him that $500,000, Dave, we have $4 million in there, what are we going to do with the money? You're not going to get somebody to bring 7,000 people. We, I mean, we almost turned it down. Kurt couldn't vote because he was working on the real estate deal. So anyways, so then the following council meeting, we brought it back and it was a three[1780.23] So anyways, so then the following council meeting, we brought it back and it was a three-one vote, we got Dave to vote on it. I still can't believe that, it's like, how did we almost not get Portos because we didn't?
At that time, it may seem like, hey, maybe we have already two, two of them in Downey, only the third one.
We didn't have anything.
We had, no, we didn't have it.
Portos?
Are you talking about the one on Firestone?
I'm talking about Portos on Downey, the bakery.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, the top of Canada?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, totally different.
They're not the same league. No, no, that had nothing to do, they were really, they were really smart. No, Portos is, is, wait, they, Portos averages now 8,000 people a day to our downtown. And on the weekend, it's about 14, 15. There was 40 new restaurants came into downtown in the area within a quarter mile of, after Portos came in. That's how much, I mean, that was the genesis for our downtown. Yeah, no, no, the other bakery is real small. No, they're not in the same league on there. Portos does more than ours and that place doesn't, you know, in a week on there, it's, they're not the same league. They're good people, they're fine, but they're not the same league. Yeah, I still can't believe we almost lost Portos.
That was a good, that was a good message.
Yeah, yeah. Raul Portos was looking at it and how we originally met, we went to Glendale and the mayor of Glendale and I had a meeting at Portos. Raul Portos came to us and Kurt was with us. We were trying to get Glendale to join the Orange Line Authority. And then Raul Portos came and that's the first time I'd been there, I'm like, this place is nuts. So I go, "Raul, would you ever consider Downey?" And he goes, "Yeah, I thought about it, but, but here's my card, call me." So he calls me a couple of weeks later and I put him in my car with our economic development and we drove around the city for two and a half hours and stuff. And then, you know, a year and a half later, it's been, he bought him that building and demolished the building with Portos. We even changed, you know, we're talking architect show, that was going to be like the one in Burbank, it was going to be like, um, Mediterranean style. And we said, "We don't want that." But he, I go, "Raul, can you do..." So he went with the mid-century modern and it's been, you know, obviously amazing for us. And yeah, and then they've gone with all-